Okay, council, it's seven o'clock on August the twenty first, twenty twenty four. I call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the flag, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just to crawl.
Okay, up next, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
Um. Mayor, I'm not in, okay, all councillors present except councillor Jackie V. Hill, and we're not too sure.
Okay.
She's running late.
Okay, no problem. We'll go down the agenda to the next item, the agenda approval. Councillor, uh, Jan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, and if councillor Jackie V. Hill shows up, excuse that.
Okay.
But councillor V. Hill, I don't think we know at this point whether it would be an excused absence or not.
Okay.
Uh, we just don't know, because we don't know, we haven't heard from her.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to communicate that we allow her to take her spot if she gets here late.
Oh, I thought you said excuse the absence.
I was, I was a poor communicator.
Or I was, this is my bad here.
That's my motion, mayor.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, uh, citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where those who have filled out the comment cards, uh, will be given an opportunity to, uh, come up to the mic when I call your name and make your comments. Uh, we do ask that you keep your, uh, comments to within three minutes. We have a clock right there. Uh, the buzzer will go off, uh, if you're talking at that time period, and then I would politely ask you to, to, uh, end your comments at that time. After we do the citizen comments, that for the people who are present, we'll go to the Zoom and, uh, see if we have any hands raised and give those, um, people an opportunity to make some comments. I do, uh, have a comment card from Manny. And if you could, Manny, when you get to the mic, uh, push the button to make sure it turns red, and then we'll know that your mic is live, okay? Um.
The people one. There you go.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, thank you all for allowing me to speak today. My name is Manny Felu. I'm a local resident here, um, the executive director of a non-for-profit and on the board of another. I wanted to talk tonight about a couple of the city ordinance amendment proposals you'll be hearing later in today's agenda. Um, specifically regarding section eleven fifty-three, there's a proposal to remove subsection B. One. Um, in recognition of the impracticality of our current ordinance requirements to find suitable place to camp or shelter before removal and citation, um, lost my place here. Instead of removing it, I urge the council to consider an alternate revision. I propose that the subsection B. One should be amended to read, "The officer has first offered an informational packet, including but not limited to contact information for any shelters in the city, contact information for recovery services in the city, a map denoting public camp areas in the city, and a map denoting public camp areas around the city such as BLM land." This is because the current requirements are that the officer sir, that the officer finds suitable placement before they remove and cite. Um, so if there is someone camping on public grounds here, the current requirement is that they contact the shelters, um, or check the camp to see if there's space before removal in sight. I think instead of removing that section, the section should read something like, we should have some kind of informational packet offered to the individual before removal and citation. Um, second, I want to address the proposed amendment to section eleven forty-nine. This amendment, I believe, is largely superfluous. Our current ordinances already grant officers the authority to order an individual to move on the grounds of obstruction, trespass, or proximity to hazards. The adoption of this proposed amendment would extend that authority, allowing officers to order an individual to move and cite them without any of those justifications, simply because they were sitting, kneeling, reclining, or lying in a public space. This could lead to unnecessary criminalization of individuals for simply being present in public areas without posing any legitimate threat or obstruction. Such a broad authority could have unintended consequences, particularly for those who are already vulnerable. I respectfully urge the council to consider these amendments with the goal of maintaining public safety while upholding the dignity and rights of all of our citizens. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I didn't receive any other comment cards from, uh, anyone in the audience, so if you could, we will now go to, um, the Zoom participants. If you can have them, um, show them how to raise their hand so that we can recognize them, and then I'll turn it back over to staff for follow-up.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak right now, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so I'll go ahead and turn it back over to staff for follow-up.
And mayor, since this, um, community, um, communication was related to an agenda item, it will be addressed when it comes up on the agenda at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, under, uh, ceremonial items, proclamation, International Overdose Awareness Day. Uh, on Alamosa City Council, uh, we take turns in reading proclamations. Uh, tonight, um, councillor, uh, Carson is going to read the proclamation, and then I believe we have those, some people in the audience, I saw you all earlier, if you can come up to the podium, uh, if you would like to, um, and he's gonna read the proclamation, but if you'd like to say a few words before we read the proclamation, uh, that'd be great, and then we'll come down and take a picture with you all, as, um, councillor Carson presents you with the proclamation. Okay? So talking to the mic, if you can pull the mic down so we can hear you, and the people on Zoom can hear you too. Thank you.
So my name is Melissa Dominguez. I do the Rural Recovery Network, um, here in the San Luis Valley. I'm a nurse. I work at Valleywide. Um, my position helps people get into treatments that are using opioids, um, so I help people get into Valleywide, SLV Health, Rio Grande Hospital, and Crossroads. Um, today, I'm here with, uh, four great individuals that are peers, so they, um, are in recovery. They're here in our community to help serve us. Um, I have two that work at SLV Ahec, McGay and Antinet. I have Tony that does Pier one twenty-eight, and I have Jackie who works at Crossroads. Um, so some amazing individuals. Um, we've been planning an SLV overdose and recovery awareness walk. Um, August thirty-first will be International Overdose Awareness Day, but we're doing this a little early, so it'll be Tuesday, uh, August twenty-seventh, five-thirty to eight-thirty. It'll be at the north entrance of Cole Park. Um, with this, we plan to, uh, remember those that we've lost, that have lost their lives, uh, celebrate those in recovery, and then add hope to those who are looking for recovery. So we'd, uh, welcome anybody who would like to come and join, walk, um, come for the celebration that we're gonna have, uh, for all of the individuals that, that we just talked about.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you so very much. So councillor Carson is gonna read the proclamation, and then we'll come down there and present it to you all, okay?
International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas the city of Alamosa does affirm and acknowledge the harm and hardship caused by drug overdose, and whereas we recognize the purpose of International Overdose Awareness Day as remembering loved ones lost to overdose and ending the stigma of drug-related deaths, and whereas we resolve to play our part in reducing the toll of overdose in our community, which claimed the lives of more than ten, one thousand eighty-nine in Colorado residents in twenty twenty-three, together with countless more affected forever, and whereas we affirm that the people affected by overdose are our sons and daughters, our mothers and fathers, our brothers and sisters, and deserving of our love, compassion, and support. Therefore, be it resolved that Tycoman, Mayor of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby proclaim August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as International Overdose Awareness Day.
All right. Thank you, councillor Carson. We're gonna come down and present it.
It's like a hole in the middle there, too.
Yes.
Okay, guys, ready? One, two, three. Okay.
All right. Good job. Thank you, councillor Carson. All righty, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh, consent calendar eight.
Manny?
What happened?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. We might be missing one. Okay, thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, great. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, business brought forward by, um, city staff, development services, Habitat for Hum- Humanity.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So I have two items this evening. The first is a perpetual fee waiver for the Habitat for Humanity. So on an almost yearly basis, they come to city council, um, after, uh, having completed a housing project, and they ask for their fees to be refunded. So it's sort of an unusual system. Usually what we do when we're working with a housing partner, if council agrees, is, um, in a way to support affordable housing, especially if they hit the sort of AMI targets for the specific level of affordable housing we're looking for, or one of the specialized housing populations, like the elderly or the unhoused, we can waive building permits, and we usually do it on the front end, uh, in the building department. Uh, the way that Habitat's always sort of done it is they'll build the house, and they'll come back to staff a year later, and they'll ask for the fees to be refunded. And it's kind of a nightmare from a budgeting perspective. Um, it also is, um, a little bit weird just for our finance department. And so because one of our goals identified in our twenty twenty-one housing plan is to actually support Habitat for Humanity as much as possible so that they can build affordable housing, and because we basically, council has always returned these fees, um, we're asking if we can just, in perpetuity, as long as their goals stay aligned with the city, for us to have a perpetual fee waiver in place. So when they come in and they apply for building permits, or tap fees, sewer fees, planned investment fees, we can waive those as staff and not have to go through the process with council. Um, again, there's, there's an important caveat in the council communication that if their goals were to change, or the city priorities were to change, or there was a fundamental shift in what the work they do, or the work that we're working on, then we would have to reevaluate it and bring it back to council. So it doesn't, we say into perpetuity, but that is provided that all of our goals align and stay the same. So that is our first item from Development Services this evening.
Okay, count.
And this really is staff-driven, mayor. Um, the, from the finance perspective and the budgeting, it's, it's just trying to keep track of it, and it is something council has waived every single time.
Okay. I think I saw councillor Hensley, then councillor, um, Jan V. Hill?
I was just gonna make a motion.
I just had a quick question. Uh, is Habitat good with this?
Yes.
Okay.
So obviously, this fits, um, the consistency of what we're already doing, and obviously helps our financial situat-, or not our financial situation, our finance department. So with that, I go ahead and move, um, that we approve the perpetual fee waiver for affordable home projects, uh, for the San Luis Valley Habitat for Humanity.
Second, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item, uh, is public post-award hearing for the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley Early Childhood Learning Center Community Development Block Grant.
So this is a HUD requirement, so you have a hearing before you apply for the funding, and then you need to have at least one public hearing during the period that you're spending the funds. So this is our closeout hearing. This is actually for our first CDBG grant, the one that was awarded in twenty twenty-one. This is the one that was for, uh, design and engineering for six hundred thousand, and, uh, we have submitted the finest, final invoices and the final checks. We're finishing out the closeout paperwork, um, managed to get the whole, the Boys and Girls Club, this is, this is their work, but they had their whole facility designed, um, and they also were able to finance in a traffic study so that they can have a bus drop-off of two eighty-five. So that was kind of the last piece that took a little bit longer than we anticipated. So this is a public hearing. This is just whether or not we've met the goals of the CDBG program, and, um, if there's any public comment, then we're meeting that basic HUD requirement this evening.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I will open up the, uh, public hearing for the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley Early Childhood Learning Center Community Development Block Grant. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time, uh, regarding this matter, feel free to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Aaron Meltberger, uh, I am with the Boys and Girls Clubs of the San Luis Valley. As you likely know, this grant is only possible to do the good work of supporting this dream of a new early care and learning center because of the sponsorship, uh, from the city of Alamosa. So on behalf of our capital campaign committee and the Boys and Girls Club, I sincerely appreciate your continued support for all we're doing for young people. And it was actually really fun going through this design process. Um, I think, I just want to say three highlights, uh, for me. The first is that we were able to z- design this with licensing, so everything will meet code and regulations, not code, everything will meet regulations, uh, by the time that we open, we won't have to come up for a second review. The second thing that I love is that we designed this, uh, with families and providers. Providers said things to us like, man, it would save so many hours of our day, two hours a day on average, of lining children up, telling them to catch a bubble, walking quietly down the hallway just to wash their hands. If we could have a sink in each of our rooms so we could do hand washing before snack. Such a simple solution, but we would have never thought about it if we weren't designing with providers. And the third thing that I want to highlight is we designed this with, um, with families who had small children. And two of my favorite things that happened, the first is, uh, they advocated for a drop-off zone for infants. I don't know if any of you remember, uh, lugging in infants in a heavy car seat, and when you had to go across a crosswalk in a parking lot, man, you get some swole biceps, but, uh, it's, it's a big lift. Um, and so they said, if we could just have a little ten-minute drop-off so we didn't have to walk as far. Uh, and the second was, they wanted to keep their car seats and strollers in the site so that if they had a partner or a grandparent who was coming to pick it up, they wouldn't have to switch those, uh, those between the two different cars. So we designed a little area for that. This is just the kind of things that came out of this planning and design process that I thought were really cool and innovative. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. So if we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this hearing, please do so now. Uh, if not, we'll go to the Zoom participants. I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the mic, so we'll go ahead to the Zoom participants. And Ms. Martinez, if you could give them instruction, how to raise their ni-, uh, their hand so we could, uh, recognize their names, um, and allow them to make a comment during this time.
If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
I don't see any hands raised, so I'll bring it, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring everything back to council for, uh, comments or motion. Councillor Jan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we... Is there action? Not really, right?
No, it's just to close it.
Right.
Did you finish it? I didn't hear you. Oh, we don't have to make a motion? That's it? Okay, I closed the hearing then.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was easy. All right. Let's go to the next item on the agenda. And that's gonna be the first reading of ordinance number nineteen, twenty twenty-four, and ordinance amending sections eleven dash forty-nine, eleven dash fifty-three, and eleven dash ninety-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to prohibit sitting and lying down on public right-of-way, to amend details of the trespassing ordinances, and to remove the requirement that shelter or campground space be available before citing someone for unauthorized camping on public property.
Thank you, mayor. I'll kick this off. Captain Mestes has made his way, uh, up to the podium for further questions the council might have, or to elaborate on anything that I omit, because really the impetus for this ordinance came from Chief Dingfelder, uh, who had been in frequent conversation with his counterpart in Durango, um, about aspects of this ordinance that are patterned after what we've called Durango's sit-lie ordinance. And really, there are three, um, ordinance provisions that are affected, um, and so there's a, an addition of something patterned after Durango's sit-lie ordinance that would prohibit, uh, people from sitting or lying down in public rights of way. Uh, we do have that occurring in the city of Alamosa. Um, there are options that you see with respect to that, that you can modify how the ordinance is written. Right now, it's written to apply to the entire city and twenty-four hours a day. Durango's, for instance, applies to their downtown and from, if I get it right, uh, s-, uh, seven in the morning and all the way around the clock until two in the morning. Um, so those, those are options you can think of with respect to that aspect, aspect of it. Uh, the other, the second change is an amendment to section eleven ninety-nine, which is our trespass ordinance, um, clarifying that if you are removed from a property and returned to that same property within twenty-four hours without further permission of the owner, that's, again, a trespass without further need for the owner to say, hey, you're not welcome back here. Uh, that was actually in a different provision of Durango's ordinance, and when I read that, preparing the sit-lie stuff, I said, oh, that's useful, that's helpful. Um, there was also a provision in there that Durango had about opening closed gates and doors constituting a trespass. And finally, um, pursuant to the recent Supreme Court decision in city of Grants Pass, uh, Oregon v. Johnson, which you will see coming up in a completely different ordinance, same context, um, we have had a provision in our camping on public property ban that required the officer who was dealing with, uh, an alleged violation of that ordinance to ensure that there was space available in a shelter, La Puente Shelter, or in, uh, other available campground, which for us is St. Benedict's. After the Grants Pass decision, that is no longer a required provision. So this ordinance proposes clarifying, uh, or simplifying our trespass ordinance by, or I'm sorry, our camping on public property ordinance by removing that requirement to ensure that there is other shelter space available. Um, there have been a number of listed alternatives. The gentleman whose name I didn't catch who spoke in public comment proposed another alternative, which if council is interested in exploring further, uh, I was gonna shout at him and have him leave his wording, because I don't have shorthand and I didn't write it down, but there are other universes of, of alternatives out there as well.
I believe it was something that, other than just removing, um, the language to be compliant, that we no longer have to, um, have space available for camping.
Right, he wanted informational handouts.
Correct.
But he had a lot of detailed language about what he wanted in there.
Oh, I, that I wasn't, okay.
So that, oh, we do have a recording, as the city clerk reminds us. So anyway, that's what I have. Captain Mestes, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
No, um, I believe the city of Fort Collins is passing the same type of ordinance as well, so.
Okay, I see a mic on, um, councillor Jan V. Hill?
Just a question. Uh, it pertains to the Grants Pass, uh, Supreme Court decision, and you commented, Eric, on, uh, police officers are no longer required to ensure to, to, to let the homeless person know that there is space available? Is that right?
They don't have to, it, so the old requirement was there had to be space available before the person could be cited. That, that, there was no communication between the, the camping person and the officer that was required, but the officer had to know that there was space available before a citation could happen.
And so now what would it look like? Just move along?
Just move along. You're not allowed to camp here.
Okay.
It doesn't matter if there's space available or not.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, councillor Carson?
Do you think, or do you, have you guys talked about? Are you gonna tell them anything about, like, let's say we, we're gonna, let's say we're gonna enforce the rules at St. Benedict. Let's say we go that route and it stays open, and we're gonna start locking it down, you know, being more, I, I guess, enforcing the rules more. Um, during a scenario where you're gonna cite somebody, or you're trying to move somebody along because they're in front of someone's home, are you guys talking about just saying, hey, can't camp here, there's a camp on this, in this area, you can go there?
So if St. Benedict's still available, yeah, we'll direct them over there. If it's not, then we can always direct them to La Puente Resources and Street Outreach there to help them with whatever they need.
It's just simply that we're not required to do anything anymore. We just can do it as a courtesy if we want.
Well, and really, and let me just clarify this, because I don't think I was very clear. We were never informational, uh, the in- information sharing that you're kind of talking about was never a requirement of our ordinance. What, what our ordinance required was, if there was no space available in St. Benedict's, then you couldn't cite somebody. Then they could camp on public property. That's, that's what the prior ordinance said, and that's what this is removing. There does not have to be space available. St. Benedict's could be full, the shelter could be full, and now we can still prevent people from camping on public property.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Car-, councillor Carson. Um, councillor Hensley, then councillor Krebs?
I was just going to, so it sounds like as, I don't know if that's a policy, but as sort of routine, if this was to happen, your officers do go into it with some, um, empathy in the sense of saying that obviously, that idea that there are a few places that we can suggest for you, that type thing. We still have you something to move, but it's done in a way, starting off at least with that empathetic.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Krebs?
Hi.
Um.
No questions, just thank you. Thank you for this ordinance. When we did the public meeting, we heard a lot, and when we were all speaking our minds, it, for me, it was if the campground was to be a reality, we needed to have more accountability and stronger teeth and things, and this is a great first step to that. So thank you, and thanks the chief for the research and for creating this.
Will do.
Councillor, um, Jan V. Hill?
Thank you. Two questions. The first is, uh, do you have data from Durango? I'm, I'm curious on the no, no lie and sit in downtown and that. Are they giving out tickets to folks in Durango for, for this?
I don't have an answer for that. I don't know if Chief Dingfelder got that information or not. I don't know if it's just a recent ordinance they passed, or how long they've had it, so that information not be, may not be available.
And I, we can check on that, but I also feel like part of the value from when I've talked to Chief Dingfelder is it, it allows the police officers to approach the individuals, um, to have something like this. And so even if it doesn't result in a ticket, it's still allowing them to address some of the behavior that was viewed as a nuisance.
No, I think it's a good tool to have, for sure. No, I think it's a good tool to have, for sure. I just, I'm just concerned. I think, I've been thinking about this all week, counsel, is we have a homeless individual camping on a sidewalk and with empathy, we tell him to move on. Two hours later, they're on the, they're four blocks away. And then we tell them to move on, then they go to the park, or then they go underneath the bridge, like.
You know.
I need help. I need help with that, people. I don't understand. What's the goal there?
I don't have a data answer for you, Counselor V. Hill. But Chief Dingfelder did express to me, and I think put it in council communication, that the Durango chief says that it has been an effective ordinance for, they were having real problems in their downtown. And they've had this ordinance in place since at least twenty eighteen. And the anecdotal evidence from the Durango chief is he's very appreciative to have it.
And I will, Sheriff Council, a little bit behind the curtain. As from a staff perspective, we did have quite the debate on how it should be written. And should it have been written just starting with the downtown with the option to widen it to citywide? But several of us felt like the concerns you hear from constituents are beyond just the downtown. If we think along State Avenue and some of our other commercial areas. And then it was like, well, if we write it for the commercial areas, well, are we just good then in pushing into residential areas type of situation? And so we did have quite the debate of how to even write this. And so instead of showing preferential treatment to one aspect of our community, we wrote it as the whole thing with listing the options that you could narrow it down. And then the other part that we probably will make clearer in the council communication for second reading is while this allows officers to approach individuals in the right-of-way who are sitting or lying, and to play out your scenario slightly, if the individual moves along, I think it's, or stands up, I think it's doubtful that there's probably going to be ticketing unless they, it escalates and becomes something else. But we also need individuals or we need our community to understand where the city's hands start to get tied, which is more in the general loitering. So if they are standing up and they're not in the middle of the street, they're not impeding traffic, we can't infringe on people's constitutional rights, even if it's panhandling slash loitering. Now, I know there's some other communities that have had language such as aggressive panhandling, which there's another part of our ordinances that addresses the aggressiveness. But just regular standing there with the sign or asking for money is something that's constitutionally protected unless it starts getting into a safety-sensitive situation. So I thought I would take that opportunity to make that clear as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Counselor Carson?
I don't know if I should ask this question, but I kind of got it. So this ordinance is going to apply across the board, correct? Like, this will be applied by when an officer comes across an individual impeding traffic, impeding, you know, sitting down or lying down, you'll apply it, correct?
So it'll give us an opportunity to approach that individual in town to move along.
So let's just use the scenario of a protest. Let's just say there's a bunch of people sitting in Main Street with their legs crossed. This should apply the same way, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are other ordinances that would apply to that as well. Right. That's impeding traffic.
Just curious, just making, it was just curious.
Okay, Counselor Hensley?
Well, it doesn't look like there's any more lights on. Did you want to ask any questions? Because I'm going to make a motion.
Yes, I have one question that I was going to make a comment on. In the ordinance, I think you mentioned they would be required to leave for twenty-four hours from a site. Is there any way we can increase that to seventy-two hours? Because we've been getting a lot of comments from the businesses who really find this, you know, challenging for them and their businesses.
Sure. I don't know. So right now, if a business has a repeat problem with somebody, they will more than likely issue a written trespass notice.
Okay.
And that, that would be effective.
Forever?
Forever and for all length of time. What this is more designed to address is a kind of a one-off where someone is trespassing. They've been asked verbally by the owner to leave, and they leave, but then they come back again without that written trespass notice. So there are different elements in our ordinance of what constitutes trespass. One is you've been asked to leave and you refuse. Another is you're subject to a written trespass notice that says you can't be here. And there are, I think there's six of them. I don't have them all memorized.
So I would, because I think we're trying to send a message. I would suggest we add seventy-two hours instead of twenty-four hours to it. But that's just my opinion. Counselor Hensley?
So I'm going to move that we pass ordinance number nineteen slash twenty twenty-four on first reading with the amendment of making it seventy-two hours instead of twenty-four hours and set for a public hearing on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P. M. or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I just want to urge council to think about big picture. That, like Mr. Carson said earlier, if there's going to be more teeth out at St. Benedict's and people aren't meeting those requirements and the rules and they're out and they can't be there. And so now they're out in the streets again and we, I just feel like we're cycling them through town. And I, I just need help with that.
If I could. So I don't think we all have the perfect answer. I'm not sure if any community does. I think, I think the hope for some individuals is for those who have presented themselves as not being able to follow the rules at St. Benedict's, that it becomes a little more challenging and maybe they would change their behavior. For those that continue to not change their behavior, if they're not from here, maybe that might be the motivation that they would need to seek services somewhere else. The other outcome is, you know, because we showed, I think it was about fifty-one, fifty-two percent were here from the valley. If it's, again, someone who hasn't changed their behavior to follow the rules, they're from here, they're not going to leave. Then I think the thing the county was concerned about is that if we are successful in our enforcement, which is what our intention would be, is that it will more than likely push them out to campsites out in the county where there's more undeveloped property and areas where they might go more unnoticed type situation. So those are different ways. I think from talking with George Dingfelder, he, he felt that their police department's priority, regardless of St. Benedict is open or not, because with the rules, we're still going to see some shifting, is that they were going to do everything within their power from an enforcement perspective to minimize the impact on neighborhoods. But there's, there's not easy answers, clearly.
Okay, you're good. Counselor Yonvi Hill? Okay. Counselor Jamie Dominguez?
I have a certain scenario. I know a person that's very close to me who has worked at multiple gas stations. And I think whether they're camping at St. Benedict's or staying in the streets in Alamosa, there are some individuals who are not respecting homeownership businesses. And to the extent where I know that one individual has chased an employee around the store and around the parking lot because of repeat issues with this person. So I think thinking about the business owners and the private property owners, there are some people that so happen to be homeless and in St. Benedict's and alongside some people who aren't homeless that trespass like this in your own personal space. And I think it would be good to, I'm for this one.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Counselor Dominguez. So we have a motion and a second. I don't see any more lights on, so everyone could please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you, council. Okay, that brings us to the next item. Public hearing in second reading for ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance amending section one through eighteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa concerning criminalization of certain offenses to adjust the number of repeat offenses in telling jail as a sanction downward, amending section eleven through one hundred concerning theft to align punishment with the corresponding state statute and adding a new ordinance provision concerning burglary.
Mayor, that's a pretty good summary, and it's what it's supposed to be in the title of an ordinance. And this is second reading, so I'm not going to go into too much detail. But just to set the stage a little bit in case there is public comment, what this ordinance does is essentially five things. It changes the standard for when repeat offenses become jailable from the current four and two years to be two in one year. It adds burglary as an offense and makes it jailable as a first offense. It categorizes thefts, which currently are just theft, into different levels of theft based on how much was stolen and mirrors what the state does with those categories. It provides for the ability then to aggregate instances of theft that occur within six months to bump them up into a higher category. Or if it's instances of theft against the same victim, doesn't have to be limited to that six months. You can aggregate that as well to bump it up into the higher category. And then provides that theft of amounts over three hundred dollars are jailable as a first offense rather than needing to be a second offense within two years. Now, the council communication set forth a number of alternatives for you to consider if you wish to, in addition to the recommended alternative, which is just to approve it as presented. I was having a discussion with the municipal judge recently about this issue. And out of that discussion, I'd just like to present for your consideration another alternative that is not in the council communication. And that would be, let me pull this up and share it for you. Just because it's easier to see words for some people than to hear them. There we go. So there we are in section two of the ordinance. This is adding a new subsection C to the theft ordinance provision. And what I would propose as another alternative for your consideration is for thefts that are less than three hundred dollars, which I will tell you are most of what we see in municipal court. Jailable if there are two in one year, but no more than ten days in jail for each one of those offenses once they become jailable. So your third one is a ten-day potential jail sentence. Your fourth one is a ten-day potential jail sentence. Your fifth one is a potential ten-day jail sentence. I would propose that as an alternative, you could consider adding a sentence to that subsection one that would say, however, in in the event the conviction is for a third or greater offense in the space of one year, the sentence may be no more than thirty days in jail. So if you're starting to get multiple offenses, and we do see a lot of these as well, that gives the judge discretion to do greater than just the ten days. And what he's concerned was, was this limit on his discretion.
Okay.
So with that, I have nothing. Unless you have questions for me, and so you can then move to the public hearing.
Okay, so what we'll do, we'll open up the public hearing, bring it back to council, and then let council answer any questions you may have. That way we can keep the order. Is that okay? All right, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance amending section one through eighteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa concerning criminalization of certain offenses to adjust the number of repeat offenses in telling jail as a sanction downward, amending section eleven through one hundred concerning theft to align punishment with the corresponding state statute and adding a new ordinance provision concerning burglary. So anyone in the audience like to make any comments during this public hearing, please come up to the podium and make your comments. I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium, so we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom participants. And then after the Zoom participants have had an opportunity to comment, we'll bring it back to council. Ms. Martinez, if you could show them how to raise their hand again?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to raise your hand, you use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're going to dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for comments. Any council member, Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. For Eric, with the recent information that you gave us, if, what would be the fiscal impact to what the city pays for jail time if we adopt that versus what was already in the proposal?
Sorry, thank you. It's hard to set really an estimated impact because we don't know how many offenders this might apply to. It kind of depends upon the behavior of the people becoming, coming before municipal court. And we don't really know the discretion of the judge. But the jail costs, and I'd have to pull up the.
Sixty-three dollars and fifty-three cents a day.
There you go. Sixty-three dollars and fifty-three cents a day. So I think you could probably figure something on the order of a few thousand dollars in addition to what you might otherwise see because of increased jail sentencing.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Yeah, I just want to point out that for the public especially, here's another example of your city council listening to you all that we need to get tougher on crime, so we're giving our justice system more teeth to go after people who are committing crimes.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other comments before anyone makes a motion? Counselor Yonvi Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four.
I would like to, if you're open to amending it though, to what was recommended.
That was a yes.
Okay. Yeah.
The record didn't get that.
And before we go just a little bit further, you had mentioned up to thirty days. Why is there a limit on the days? Can we do more days or is that just maximum amount according to statute?
Well, it's not a maximum amount. It's already more than the state equivalent is.
Okay.
And it's more than the originally written version.
Okay, I just wanted clarification.
And when you, so if you bump that up to thirty, then the next tier, which is theft of up to seven hundred and fifty dollars, is a hundred and twenty days. So you can start to aggregate also. Remember, there's that six-month time period. And you can aggregate amounts to bump it up into the next tier potentially. So it's kind of a moving matrix.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
So with the amended motion, I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Hey, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you, council. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. First reading of ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, amending chapter ten, article seven of Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa concerning licensing of private security services.
Oh, that's going to be me. So this ordinance here is going to amend our code for security licenses. This actually hasn't really been changed since we adopted the code in nineteen sixty-four. So it's going to do four things when we update this. So the, one, the police department's no longer going to have to be responsible for certifying gun range proficiency. So instead, they'll just, will require a private security guard using a firearm to qualify and be carrying a concealed carry permit, which they have to meet basic proficiency requirements there. So that takes that away. Then it's, then the investigation by the clerk into the character of the applicant. Um then it's then the investigation by the clerk into the character of the applicant. Um it gets simplified into objective standards. Um where I can just use the criminal background check that we do, rather than having the vague language that's in there. Which is currently is of good moral character and is not habitual junkard or addicted to or dependent upon any drugs. So that was language from nineteen sixty-four. Um and then it exempts peace officers from the licensing requirements because they can go in. Moonlight as private security currently without getting a license. I think it's supposed to mean, but Eric wrote it, so I didn't question it. So it's supposed to be exempt. Um and then we're gonna remove the requirement for a bond and just because we require insurance. The insurance, um ten thousand, I believe, or a hundred thousand. It's either ten thousand or a hundred. That's pretty high.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and don't forget to talk into the mic, Eric, um so they can hear you, okay? All right.
And so, yeah, this is first reading.
Okay.
You can approve and we'll have a public hearing on September fourth.
And council?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty four on first reading and set it for a public hearing on September fourth or soon thereafter.
Okay.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Hey, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously unanimously.
Right, great, thank you. Moving right along, we're on the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty four. And ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for our conduct of the November fifth. Twenty twenty-four coordinated election.
Okay, um council, this is just your you need to hold a public hearing for this. Um so we can participate in the coordinated election this November. Um this is a requirement in order to participate, and we don't have any changes in the IGA. They're the same as we've done in past elections.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, the second reading uh of ordinance number sixteen. Dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for conduct of the November. Fifth twenty twenty-four coordinated election. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time in this hearing, please come up to the podium and do so. Okay, I don't see anyone coming up to the podium, so Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind again, giving instructions to the Zoom participants. Or how they can raise their hand to be recognized?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so um I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll close this public hearing, bring it back to council. For any comments or either motion. Councilor Yan Vio?
Mayor, I move that we approve on sec- on second reading ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
You're not on. Somebody voted no, so.
I voted no.
Oh, okay. So the motion carried five to one with Mayor Coleman voting no.
Okay.
And mayor, um before we move on to committee reports, we needed to back up a little bit. We weren't sure, um we weren't paying attention to the language when you set the. Look sit lie ordinance for the public hearing. Um we just want to make it clear, we needed that to be set for September eighteenth. It's not actually the next meeting, and so um you don't need to revote, you don't need to do anything like that, but we we weren't paying close enough attention to. Catch if that was said or not. So we just wanted to clarify that, that the sit lie second reading um will be September eighteenth. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh committee report. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor uh Dominguez?
Yeah, so I have one. It was the housing coalition today and um. There were some discussions around the new laws that are being passed around evicting and being a tenant. And I was really in awe of this. I've been in awe of this group since I've been on this um. This committee and I don't think you could have found a better group of people. They're the way they interact with each other and how much they know about um. Some of the issues that have come up in the entity um blows my mind still to this day. So they were talking about some eviction laws. That are coming into place and how they have to revisit this weekly, monthly, because there are just so many coming through. They're really diligent on that. And I think it's it's it becomes a little hindering, I think, for people that they really need to do, need to evict. So the housing is a is a safer place. So I really get my hat off to them for working through that stuff. Um they are not in the business of um displacing anybody. They're just really trying to make the housing authority a better place. Um so when when they're looking at this kind of stuff. Um the maintenance has got a full staff now. They had some turnaround there and they're um working really diligently to address stuff um. That's coming up before winter hits and there's some trainings going on with their staff around remodeling and doing some of the um work themselves. Because once again, the state um I think hinders certain agencies with finding contractors to do work with. With having to be a part of Davis Bacon Wages and that kind of stuff. It's hard for them to get projects done, so they're entertaining training in their um. Maintenance department, which I thought was pretty cool. And they were talking about how to get return on their investments too with um the financial piece and looking at some of their options with that. So um once again, I'm in awe of this group and I'm I enjoy this meeting a lot. I learned a lot there.
Thank you, uh councillor Dominguez. Thank you. Councillor Krebs and then councillor Hensley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I went to the Alamosa senior citizens meeting last week, monthly meeting. Not quite the thorny issues that um yours talks about councillor Dominguez. They they had a successful Father's Day event. Fundraising event and they're looking forward to serving breakfast at the early iron and. I'm urging everyone to go and try their amazing breakfasts. Their biscuits are amazing, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kreb. Councilor Hensley?
So I do apologize. I had to come straight here from my office, so I didn't get a chance to stop at home to get my notes. So um Heather, do you mind if there's anything that you think stood out from the rec? Board, and I'll give you a minute because while you think of that, or if Andy does, I'll talk about Main Street. And again, I'm going a little bit from memory. Um on the Main Street, uh we just had this this last week. I also, similar to councillor Dominguez, I just really love being on the Main Street. It really is vibrant. Lots of great ideas, thinking outside the box. Uh the things that we covered this last week was a little bit of a. Not as media of a me- not as meaty of a meeting, which was nice, but really so many great things happening. So many people who have interest in our downtown. Um all of the murals that are coming up, those are fantastic. The excitement over uh the grants. That we're getting for some of the work that's gonna be done on the alleys. Um so just a lot of great reports and things like that from the Main Street. So um keep an eye out. There's a lot of activities coming up. So just really watch out for all the different activities.
I think for um Parks and Rec, we we talked through um. Obviously, how the different programs are doing as far as attendance and and signing up and and all of those things. I know Andy spent some time talking about the selection of a design engineer for the bridge. Um that came in quite a bit higher than what's in the budget, so Andy and his team and and Steve have been spending a lot of time. Trying to value or take some things out that maybe weren't needed um and make sure. That we've got the right level of engineers engaged with the right number of hours and and things like that, trying to get it. Um down closer to to where we would need it, but that the company they're looking at um really is gonna probably do a great job. Andy, was there anything else from a Parks and Rec perspective? There is a public meeting on the twenty-seventh. It's the second one to get public input on the. Vision of really kind of activating the Rio Grande um and making improvements there. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh council, for your committee reports. That brings us down to uh staff announcements.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I know several of you have been getting questions on when the Valhagen clock is going to be installed. Um our street crew has been out um getting some of the prep done. There's other work that needs to be done by other contractors. So we're thinking for the concrete to cure, the electricity, some of the other work. We're probably three weeks. So if you if you get that question, we are in contact with the volunteers who are pretty passionate about it. Um and so hopefully this will go smoothly. I want to just express this, you know, a a high amount of gratitude for all the city employees who participated in the city fair. Especially those, um I know Andy and um Captain Mestis spent a lot of time trying to coordinate. Both the city fair, national night out. Um what I was shared by Captain Mestis is that this is the most ever. That we've had from an attendance and they ran out of hamburgers, which which they had four hundred. So. Um very successful and the weather cooperated for a launch, which was which was nice. Um I also wanted to share, we obviously had um a long night to. Receive public input as it relates to homelessness. Um not a lot of clear, easy decisions. Um I think where, if I were to summarize where council landed is this tentative, we're going to keep it. But we're going to look at increasing the rules and enforcement and see how that works out. Within their very real potential that it could still be closed type of situation. Um the homeless coalition is very much taking this seriously. They had already moved. Their August meeting up so they could try to give you a recommendation for that night. What they've decided is to still hold their regular August meeting next week and make sure to discuss it in September. So we will be bringing something back to council as it relates to rules, enforcement, brainstorming ideas. Um for your October second meeting. So they are gonna be timely with it um and and they are taking it very seriously. And then the last item I wanted to chat about is stormwater because for our farmers and. Um our water situation, we are getting a lot of rain, which is amazing. Um it'd be great if it could be spread out more than five minutes at one time. Um the deluge can make it a little bit challenging. But from a stormwater perspective, if you're getting questions, it can sometimes be. Specific to where that location is on what our answer is going to be, but here's kind of just a general. Kind of what might be going on. So if you see some flooding in our new streets, for example, where we've just built them. I promise you, we've put perfectly good stormwater, perfectly sized into those two streets. The problem is it's feeding into an existing undersized system and and so if you can envision. It's it's going into something that's probably already over capacity. So that new street has the capacity to drain it. It just can't get further than the street type of situation. It is something we take seriously. Um but it's millions of dollars at the same time to start fixing something. This isn't necessarily unique to the city of Alamosa. If you can imagine, as towns have developed, a lot of times when they first. Began as towns, they weren't even thinking stormwater infrastructure type of situation. As towns grew and evolved and engineering and design became more sophisticated, that's when stormwater needs. Became more sophisticated as well. And so there's just a certain amount of time, especially in our older. Developed areas where that system isn't isn't as large as as what it would need. The other issue we sometimes face with our stormwater is we are extremely flat. You've probably heard Dola joke about our applications to them and how they are very well aware of what lift stations do. Because we have, I think, twenty-three, twenty-four lift stations. Um it's almost the same as Reno, Nevada from a size perspective. It's a lot of lift stations. Eleven of those are stormwater lift stations. And so one of the um lift stations that Harry's gonna talk about here in a minute. The pumps are forty years old type of situation. And so we're gonna look at replacing um those pumps and I'll get to that in a minute. But when we have to replace an entire lift station, it's ranging from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars per lift station. Depending on how big it is. And so again, this is something that we can't change overnight. It takes time. When we look at your CIP. You'll see lift stations for sewer and um stormwater, like we're trying to do almost one a year. Almost type of situation. It's just gonna, it's gonna take some time. Um but we also try to clean out the the storm drains and and do things like that. But there could be something that we're not aware of. So I'm not saying this to to say, don't call us. Because there may be a stormwater issue, uh something broke or something like that. Um but we also just wanted to make it clear that it's it's nothing we can snap our fingers and 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 fix overnight. Type of thing. And we know it's frustrating, um but we are working on it. One of our lift stations has come in under budget and in order for us to fix a stormwater lift station. With the forty-year-old pumps, we needed to get an order in on the pumps ASAP if we're gonna fix it this year. So we wanted to reallocate those funds that were saved on one into this other one. So Harry, if you want to just talk a little bit about that and correct anything I said.
Sure, no, I I think you did the majority of the the heavy lifting there. Um you know, it I I do encourage people to give us a call. You know, sometimes we do get bottles that get into the system and it does create clogs. You know, we do need to do regular maintenance and stuff like that. So I don't want to say that anytime we have backup, it's just because it's an old system, because that isn't always the case. So encourage people to call, you know, let us know. We will we'll definitely go check it out. What we're experiencing on the kind of State Avenue from Eighth Street all the way down to Twelfth Street. Um you know, we rebuilt Twelfth Street. It's got basically oversized storm lines in it. But because of bottlenecks in that area around Eleventh Street, Tenth Street. Everything just kind of backs up. And these pumps at the Twelfth Street uh stormwater lift station, forty years old, we estimate they're only working at about a quarter. Percent capacity. We've been able to find new pumps that's kind of a plug and play. There's a little bit of electrical work that we need to do, change some of the railing. But we feel it'll it'll make a big difference. It's not gonna fix everything, but it'll make a big difference in at least how quickly that area. Uh drains out. Um right now, it takes about twelve hours for especially one area on Tenth Street between. East and uh County Road one ten south. I think it's the road next to the recycling center. So with the the last lift station we built, which is a foster lift station, which is kind of taking care of all the new development. Over on the Montana Azul area, we finally completed the last phase of that, which has taken the stormwater for the new development all the way to the Hickory Jackson ditch. Um we had in the budget four hundred and thirty-seven thousand to complete that last phase. Um we we were able to do the work uh for the contractor was three hundred and eighty, the electrical, which is wrapping up right now is twenty-six thousand. It leaves us thirty thousand left in that budget line item for stormwater. What I'd like to do is request the council allow me to do a budget amendment to reallocate that remaining balance. To buy two new pumps for the Twelfth Street Lift Station. Estimated cost of that is around twenty-three thousand plus electrical work. I think we'll still be under the thirty thousand dollar mark, but council will allow me to move forward with that. We'll bring a budget amendment request here in the future.
And so obviously, this isn't on the agenda. It's not a voting item. Um but since it is time sensitive, we wanted to make you aware of it tonight and give you an opportunity to express any concerns.
Okay. Want to thank you all um to especially for responding to the people who send emails and phone calls. That helps when they hear it from you. So thank you all for responding as a department and as staff. Appreciate it.
And that's all we have from a staff update.
Okay, all right. That brings us down to uh local liquor licensing authority actions. Needs and desires, hearing, new application for a beer and wine license. Um so Ms. Martinez? Uh sorry, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, uh well, you have now turned it over to me as the hearing officer to open up a public hearing on this liquor licensing matter. And um so that the folks who are here for that hearing are aware of the process. What we'll do, what I will do is open the hearing, which I'm doing right now, and the applicant will first talk to council. About the nature of the license that they're applying for, present any evidence that they have, will admit. The um notice that was posted pursuant to the liquor licensing laws. As exhibit A and any other exhibits that the applicant may have will admit at that time. And then open it up to the public for comments, starting with people in favor uh of granting the license and then moving to people opposed. And I'll, I'll do both in person and Zoom for each of those. So with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Tai Sushi, which would be up at the podium. And it looks like you have the notice that was posted. If you could present that to the clerk.
Hi, good evening, ev- everyone. I'm so nervous a little bit, because this is my first time for me stand up here. My name is Pimara. My last name, Vipanian. I am the owner of the sushi Thai Al- Al- Alamosa now. And today, I'm standing here for, I would like to get the beer and wine license for my restaurant. Yes, and everyone has something to recommend it, please let me know. Thank you.
Was posted at the restaurant there?
Yes.
Could you give that to the clerk?
So.
To Holly? And what, she'll just keep that as Exhibit A, that's all.
Okay.
So council, if you have any questions for the applicant, this would be a good time to ask.
So, um, so, did you get any signatures or anything for anybody who might be interested in having this?
Oh, yes, yes, I did, yes, I did, but I didn't bring it today.
Okay. So. All right, so with that, so didn't bring the signatures, what, in, in your thoughts, why do you think it would be good to have beer and wine at your restaurant?
Because it's, we serve Thai food and sushi. That's why it's compared with beer and wine, and I think it's a good business for town. Yes.
And then, you're, for you and your servers, will you do any training on how to serve alcohol properly?
How to serve alcohol? Yes, I am gonna do a training for the, our employee, because have to check, the first thing, we have to check the ID. Twenty, uh, have to check the ID, and we have to serve my beer and wine with the food only, not for the drinks, because we not the bar.
Right, so one of the things I would suggest, so I'm, I've actually had many years in the restaurant business, and I think this would be beneficial, is that if you're approved, there's like serve safe and some of those that actually do official training, because there's a little more to it in regards to over-serving alcohol, things like that. So I'd make that as a suggestion, so that you're doing it in a safe way.
Yes, I do, I have it to.
Thank you. Have you ever had a restaurant before?
Yes.
Where?
In, right now I have in Taos, New Mexico, and the second one in Salida.
Okay, and do you, do you serve alcohol at those locations?
Yes, both, yes.
Have you had any problems or issues with that service of alcohol?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Mayor, I see your light is on.
My light is on just because it's on, but you're the one who facilitated it. You don't worry about my light, we're good.
You didn't have a question, okay.
No question.
I don't see any other council lights on. Let me ask a question. Um, have you? You're, you're open right now for business, is that right, or, or not?
Almost, almost.
Not yet?
Not yet.
And I, following up on Counselor V Hill's question, I'm pretty sure I recognize that you used to have a restaurant here in Alamosa, is that right?
Yes, I am the employee, because on him, maybe like six or seven years ago already, maybe six years ago, but I am just a server.
When you were an employee, what was the name of that restaurant?
Uh, Thai Hut.
Thai Hut. When you were an employee at Thai Hut, did you find that patrons, people who would come into the restaurant to eat, would frequently ask for beer or wine with their meal?
Hmm, I would say some. It's not all of the people to ask beer and wine, I think. On my opinion, yes.
All right, did you have anything else to present?
Uh, nothing to present.
All right, I'll turn it over then to people present who may wish to speak for the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of, uh, issuing this license and the needs and desires of the neighborhood for a beer and wine license for sushi Thai? Please, and you can go ahead and sit down. Anybody wishing to speak can come up. I don't see anybody wishing to speak, so we'll turn it over to anybody present on Zoom, and Holly, if you could give instructions for them.
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. I don't see anyone raising their hand.
All right. And I don't see anybody making a motion, eh, toward the podium either, so with that, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to council. Council, your typical action is, if this is a clear-cut matter, to, uh, vote to direct me one way or another, to prepare findings that correspond with clear cut. If it's not clear cut, you can vote to direct me to prepare findings, uh, both granting the license and denying the license, and consider it at your next meeting.
Okay, I'll see.
So having been in the restaurant business, I will say that it does ma- make a difference to be able to offer that. And so obviously, um, so my, my thought would be, is to go ahead and s- say, that there doesn't look like any reason why we wouldn't um, approve this, obviously just making sure that they're following the rules, things like that, but yeah, I, I don't have any concerns.
I would just maybe add, could we? Yes, to everything you said, and can they provide those signatures? I, I think that's important for me to see that there was some support out there from the patrons of that.
I, I think your decision has to be based on what is presented at the hearing tonight. I, I don't want to leave it, I'm open.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll move, I, I think we're not motioning this time. Are we making a suggestion to you?
No, you'd be, it'd be a motion that you direct me to prepare findings one way or the other.
Okay, I move that you go ahead and prepare a positive. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Krebs?
A second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Good, all right. Start voting, please. We got one, one more, I think. We got one more, there you go. Good, thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, that brings us to the end of our, um, agenda. We're down to council comments. Any council comments? Counselor Carson?
Um, just want to comment, uh, in regards to your email today about the meeting Monday, I would just encourage everybody to be there, make time to try to be there. Um, it's a meeting with DHHS Secretary. Uh, I saw the bullet points and I saw, um, the plan. I'd just encourage us all to be there, so we're not caught sideways. You know, anytime the COVID pandemic preparedness words come up, I freak out, especially a couple months before elections, things like that. I feel like we're gonna get a little, hit, hit a little bit sideways. Just, just be there. That way we're not caught off guard, because when somebody of that caliber's coming down, I think we should be paying attention, especially when they're coming down with a plan and, you know, I, I, we're from the government and we're here to help, it's never one of those popular things, you know what I mean? So just I encourage everybody to try to make time to be there for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, I have, I have two comments. Um, the first one is, I was able to be part of the cleanup last week at the homeless shelter, at the homeless camp, my apologies, and, um, speak to some of the residents there, speak to some, some people that are out there, and, um, my main thought is that I equally want to help the residents that are currently at the camp, but I equally want to help the people that are there to help them as well. And so my main takeaway is I did notice that there is some weed growth out there at the camp, and that if we continue to call it a campground, and we are going to make an effort to try and continue it, that we should also make an equal effort to make it look more like a campground. And I can't ask residents of the city to clean up the weeds in their yard if we're not cleaning up the weeds for the people that live out there. So maybe just investing a little bit more money, and I know that's weird coming from me, um, into ripping down those weeds and making it a more presentable place when we're asking the residents out there to step up and meet us halfway. I think that might be a good step in our direction to show that we're serious about that. And I'm willing to, um, come to the homeless coalition meetings and discuss that point as well. Um, my other one is just a happy one, lots going on in the next couple weeks. Um, but this Saturday is Pride, and I urge everyone to go out and attend and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs.
Okay, I don't see any other, uh, lights on, so I'll go ahead and wrap up this segment. I, I want to thank the entire staff and everyone who participated, the volunteers and sponsors at the, um, City Services Fair National Night Out. It was a really good, fun time. I got a chance to, um, take our little grandson out there, and we got on some of those heavy equipment things. It was pretty cool. He enjoyed it, uh, and I did too, so that was fun. Thank you, everyone. And then, um, shout out to all the pickleballers. We had our, and the Parks and Recs did a great job in making sure we had a great, uh, place to, uh, host our tournament this past weekend. And, uh, no, I, I did not win. Um, I got smacked down, but it was okay. We had fun time, and, uh, I had to eat humble pie, so. So with that being said, this meeting ends adjourned, everyone. Thank you.